Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 21st. The committee of the whole meeting, 7:30. It does look like we have some members from the audience who have signed in to speak. So a quick reminder to those in the audience who do wish to speak tonight on the matters that are on the agenda only, and they must adhere to the following rules. The floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda. After the city council discusses with staff, we will then ask those persons wishing to address the city to keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole, through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. First item we have is newly elected officials training. Mr. McCall?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The city manager sent me quite a list of things to discuss tonight. I've talked with him further about it, and we've cut that down quite a bit. So there is expected to be a part two to this at a future date. If you have any questions as we go through this, just stop me, ask me, I'll be happy to answer them. The first thing is, the city of Rolling Meadows is a home rule community. As a result of being a home rule community, the city has powers that are greater than a non-home rule community. But one of those is the increasing taxing authorities. The only exception to that really is that the constitution prohibits the city from imposing a tax on income earnings or occupations, or anything similar to an income tax. The city also has increased regulatory authority. Non-home rule municipalities are strictly limited to whatever authority they're provided to and given to by statute. Home rule municipalities are not. So you've got broader powers to protect the health, safety, welfare of the citizens of Rolling Meadows. There are two exceptions to that, one of which is oftentimes the state legislature passes a statute or amends a statute that provides that the state has exclusive jurisdiction over that, and therefore preempting any home rule authority over that. So then we'd be limited to whatever that statute provides for. The second is if it's a matter of statewide concern. Statewide concerns are something like the Illinois Motor Vehicle Code, the Minis Act, Freedom of Information Act. One example, I can think of two, is back in 1975 or '76, the city of Urbana passed an ordinance which decreased the age limit for consuming alcoholic beverages from 21 to 19. The, I wasn't a beneficiary of that, but notwithstanding that, that went up in the court's later rule that that's a matter of statewide jurisdiction. It's up for the state to determine what the minimum age to consume alcoholic beverages are. And the city is a managerial form of government under the Illinois Municipal Code. The city manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. He's also in charge of hiring and firing, except for police and fire commission duties. City manager is appointed by a majority of the city council, and he serves an indefinite term. He also sets the agenda. And the city manager has a broad range of powers which are specifically set forth in section 2-224 of the Code of Ordinances. I didn't set all that forward or forth in here, but he has a wide degree of powers in that regard. He also makes applications for grants, although all those grants come before the city. Example of those grants are TIPP grants, DUI, safe driving, and other police department type of grants. The city council determines policy for the city. That policy is reflected in the resolutions and ordinance that the city council passes as codified in the Code of Ordinances. The city council also passes an annual budget and imposes taxes and fees on businesses and residents of the city. The city's elected officials are obviously, number one, the mayor, who's the chief executive officer of the city. The mayor acts on behalf of the formal, on the city in behalf of formal occasions. In his absence to attend any functions, the city can select another city officer. Currently, what the city does and has a process and has had for some time now is for six-month periods of time, an alderman will be the mayor pro tem. And that was established, and it moves numerically, it's board one, board two, board three, and so forth. The mayor is also the local liquor commissioner. As such, he has power to preside over hearings involving liquor licenses, the power to suspend, revoke, or impose fines on any liquor licensees. He also has the additional powers that are provided by statute or state laws. Lastly, the mayor doesn't vote, only in certain very limited circumstances. He doesn't vote on any ordinance, resolution, or motion, except that's resulted in a tie. Well, we're never going to have a tie because we have an odd number of aldermen, and we'll get to later the required vote for passage of any ordinance, any ordinance. And any resolution or motion which incurs liability or provides for the expenditure of funds requires the vote of four aldermen. Historically, the city at one time, many, many years ago, had 14 aldermen. There was a referendum that reduced that from 14 to seven. We had 14, you could have a tie. Seven, you really don't have a tie, and you need four affirmative votes or concurring votes from the aldermen for an ordinance resolution or a motion, as I've just indicated. The mayor can still vote even if four aldermen do pass an ordinance, resolution, or motion, just to vote, to indicate where the mayor's at on any particular matter. But then, the last remaining item is sometimes the ordinance resolution or resolution will require a vote of the corporate authorities. And that's provided by the statute. The statute uses the term corporate authorities. When it uses the term corporate authorities, that includes the mayor. Also, when, and oftentimes when it requires the vote of the corporate authorities, it's not a simple majority, it's oftentimes a two-thirds vote. So that's the voting power of the mayor. But the mayor, because he doesn't vote, has the veto power. So the mayor can refuse to sign any ordinance, resolution. If he does so, then that matter would become up before the city council, its next regular meeting, which cannot be five days prior to the last meeting where the vote was taken. That requires a two-thirds vote of the city council in order to override the veto. The aldermen, the duties are legislative function of the city. Again, they set the policy. They primarily vote on the ordinance's resolutions or motions. And I've indicated that again, where the ordinance is for whatever purpose or resolution or motion that carries any liability to the city or expenditure of funds requires the concurrence of the majority of the, requires the concurrence of the majority of the aldermen, which is four votes. It doesn't say alderman present, doesn't say alderman currently sitting in that capacity or anything like that. It's concurrence of the aldermen. The thing to point out here too, particularly currently, you've got six aldermen. So now you've got an even number of aldermen. If an ordinance or resolution, an ordinance, because ordinance is always require concurrence of four aldermen, along with resolutions for the expenditure of funds or incurring any liability, if there's a 3-3 vote on an ordinance until the fourth ward vacancy is filled, a 3-3 vote is such that the ordinance or resolution does not pass. The prevailing side is considered to be, in that instance, the no side. Also, our Code of Ordinances provide that every council member shall vote unless excused by the council. So you can't, you can't say present, you can't, we'll get into it later, but you can't abstain. You have to vote yes, or you have to vote no.
Excuse me. If you, let's say you, your vote benefits the, your vote benefits the employer that you currently work for in another job. You still got to vote yes or no? Okay.
We're going to get to that. That's one of the exceptions where you can abstain.
Haven't gotten to exceptions yet.
Yeah, we're getting there. But you do have to vote one way or another unless otherwise, you know, provided for. The city clerks, an elected position is currently vacant. The duties of the city clerk, you know, signs and seals city contracts, custodian of the city seal, it fixes the oppressions of the city seal to all those contracts, custodian of the documents, keeps and maintains a proper index of documents, and performs the duties required by statute or by ordinance. Currently, the city has a deputy city clerk. The city manager appoints the deputy city clerk, and in fact, the city manager can himself be the city clerk. The council interaction with staff, and this is provided by our rules and our code. If you want to talk to a department head, if it takes less than an hour, it's okay if mentioned to the department head. Over an hour, then a must question, or the issue, or the ability to do that must be directed to the city manager, who can approve, deny, or refer the matter to the city council for discussion. If a request takes more than four hours to research and prepare a response, the response, the approval must be approved by a motion of the city council. And department heads must advise the city council in writing of all requests. The city manager and city council, as a result of a council's request, can go ahead and approve that. Council will notify the city manager. Council should notify the city manager before contacting the city attorney, and then also with any discussions with staff, exclusively department heads. Meetings, regular meetings, you know, we have them on Tuesdays, the second, third, and fourth, Tuesdays of the month. For the purposes of establishing a quorum, five members of the city council need to be present. If five members of the council are not present, this council does not have a quorum. So what the council would have to do in that event would call the meeting to the order. The mayor pro tem, if he's not, if the mayor's not here, the mayor pro tem, or the mayor would state that a quorum is not, is not present, and then has the ability to adjourn the meeting even though a quorum is not present. Special meetings can also be called. They can be called by the mayor or any three council members, provided it's in writing and filed with the clerk. Not less than 48 hours needs to be provided. Notice needs to be published. The newspapers who provided and requested notice also have to be given notice. And the meetings can also be held even though it's not a bona fide emergency. And then any meetings of the city council are, be considered a regular meeting for transaction of any business. There will also be an agenda published, and that discussion will be limited to whatever the agenda was is published for the special meeting. For our meetings, we also have consent agendas for ordinances and resolutions. If a matter is located on a consent agenda for ordinances and resolutions, excuse me, the council can pass on an omnibus vote, a motion to approve the ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda. If a council member wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, they need to so specifically state. That would then pull the item from the consent agenda and allow for discussion if the council member so chooses, which would be why they would pull it. If it's not pulled, then it may not be opened for discussion. As far as motions are concerned, when a motion's made, it's got to be seconded. When it's seconded, it's placed up for discussions before the council. A member's not allowed to speak more than two times on any pending motion. And then, only when another member has not spoken in regard to that, that matter. Once the mayor's called a vote, thank you. Once the mayor's called a vote, a member must vote yea or nay, as we've talked about. Also, a member cannot explain why they voted yes or no. You either vote yes, or you vote no. Once the mayor announces the vote, and says it's 4-3, 5-1, whatever the case might be, a council member can no longer change their vote. Up until that time, a council member can change their vote. Precedents of motions and required motions. According to our Code of Ordinances and also Robert's Rules, and I'll point out too right now that the city council has adopted Robert's Rules of Order, I believe it's second edition. Those Robert's Rules of Orders pertain to the city council proceedings unless the city council ordinances, and there are instances where that's applicable, deviate from Robert's Rules of Ordinance, Robert's Rules of Order, I apologize. I've indicated in here the precedence of motions. When a question is under debate, the following motions, and I've got them set forth on page five, take precedence over one another as listed. Thanks very much. I'm being inundated with water and cough drops. Thank you very much. And you can, you'll see here, for those of you in the council table to have it, they go in the order of one, motion to adjourn to a day certain, motion to adjourn, take a recess, and they go all the way down the line. But you could pay particular note to section 2-103 subsection B, which I have set forth there. Motions that are labeled two, four, and five, which are adjourn, previous question, and, I'm sorry, motions to adjourn, lay on the table, the previous question, are to be decided without debate. So once a motion is made for either of those motions, it's made, it's seconded, there's no debate, the mayor just asks the court to call the roll. With respect to number five, the previous question, if someone makes a motion to call a previous question, which has happened maybe about a month ago or so, that requires a two-thirds majority for passage. A motion to adjourn is always in order. That's why it's number two on the list. So you can always make that. But for example, if, if a member were to make a motion to call the previous question, that's second, it's not discussed, it's not debatable. If another council member were to make a motion to lay on the table, that has precedence over the motion to call the previous question, so that motion would be considered first, and then would go to the previous question. There's some exceptions to that, but in any event, that gives you an idea as how the order of the preferences to those motions go. We've talked about a motion to move the previous question. Motions to lay on the table, they're not debatable. The only thing is that if you've got a motion to lay on the table and you put conditions on it, then it may very well be debatable. The motion to lay on the table is generally to be taken up either at that same meeting, which requires a two-thirds vote, or it needs to be taken up at the following meeting, which doesn't require a two-thirds vote. If it's not taken up at the same meeting or a subsequent meeting, then in that event, it could still be brought back. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's the end of it. Motion to postpone, you can make a motion to postpone indefinitely, which pretty much just kills it. If that motion is seconded and approved, it cannot be taken up again at the same meeting. So if, well, I won't get into that. But the next one is a motion to amend. Frequently, that's one of the ones that's used more often than not. So you've got a motion to approve second, the council member wants to amend the ordinance or resolution, as the case may be, then that motion is made. But the, the thing to remember too is that if you're dealing with a motion to amend, the debate or discussion on the motion to amend should be limited to the amendment itself. It doesn't extend back into the entire ordinance or resolution. You've got to limit the discussion to what's germane to the motion to amend. And also, you cannot make an amendment to an amendment to an amendment. That is not permitted. Your motion to fill in the blanks, that's kind of, kind of an easy one. It's very similar to a motion to amend. Same sort of things with the motion to substitute. If you want to substitute a phrase for another phrase, you make a motion to substitute, that gets seconded, that's debatable. And then there's a vote on the motion to substitute. Motions to reconsider, this is where we're different from Robert's Rules. Under Robert's Rules, as you know, when Robert's Rules, a motion to reconsider needs to be made by a council member who voted on the prevailing side, and seconded by any council member. Our rules are different. Our rules are, the motion to reconsider needs to be made and seconded by whoever voted on the prevailing side. So if you get back to what I was talking about earlier, if you've got a 3-3 vote, at one meeting, the prevailing side is the three that voted no. If at the next meeting, a council member wants to make a motion to reconsider, the only ones that can make a motion to reconsider are those who voted no at the previous meeting and seconded by a council member who also voted no at the previous meeting. The only additional twist to that is, as I talked about earlier, sometimes motions, or I'm sorry, ordinances or resolutions, pretty much ordinances, will require a two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities. So under our council, that would be six votes. If there are only five votes to vote to approve it, it fails because it didn't get the requisite two-thirds votes. So a motion to reconsider, in that instance, can be made by anyone who voted yes or yea, and seconded by whoever voted yea because it, it didn't pass only because it didn't get a super majority or required number of votes. So that's an exception to that. The Open Meetings Act, the preference is that all meetings of the city council, all legislative bodies in the state of Illinois will be open to the public. There are instances where the city council could go into a closed session. The procedure for doing that is it requires a motion, it requires a second, it requires a roll call vote. A favorable roll call vote will allow the council to go into a closed session. The mayor will then indicate under what section of the Open Meetings Act the city council's going into a closed session, and generally described the nature of it, pending business, personnel, whatever the case might be. There are 35 exceptions to the Open Meetings. Many of them, if you go through the list, you'll see, don't apply to us. The ones that predominantly do are the appointment or employment discipline of specific employees. Key term there, specific employees. The other thing to remember in a closed session is, we're in a closed session to talk about whatever we specifically went in to talk about. And we need to stay focused on what you went in to specifically talk about. So we can't go out and, go out and on into other topics, talking about employees generally, for example, under this section. You need to stick to what we went in for. The other exception applicable more often to us is collective bargaining manners, selection of persons to fill a public office, purchase or release of real estate, setting a price for the sale or purchase of real estate, and a litigation, which is number 11. Those are primarily what the city council goes into closed sessions to discuss. In addition to that, you, you can't take any action in a closed session. You need to come out into an open session if you're going to take any type of, type of an action. I point out too, you can, it's possible for the city council, even though going into a closed session is not contained on the agenda, you can still go into a closed session. That's fine, there's no problem with that. Just got to follow the rules, as I've just indicated, in order to get into the closed session, and, and keeping in mind that you're not going to take any action, you're not going to come out and take any action because the matter's not on the agenda, but you can still go into a closed session. The Open Meetings Act defines what a meeting is. In a meeting is a gathering, whether in person, or by video or audio conference, telephone call, electronic means, includes electronic email, electronic chat, instant messaging, or any of the contemporaneous interaction or communication quorum of the members of the city council. Pardon me.
Jim, do we have a precedence on that? It might be, I don't know if it's for staff or not, like, using technology, like, if one of us does have a conflict for a Tuesday night meeting, since it does say audio is available, is a conference call available if there were to be a conflict?
So the city of Rolling Meadows does not?
So the city of Rolling Meadows does not have an ordinance or a code that allows for telephonic to be here at that point. So it did come up some time ago, but it did not pass, and each municipality, each public body must pass their own if they're going to allow that or not.
Perfect.
And that's only in certain circumstances.
Sure.
Either you're ill, or you're on a business trip, or whatever. But there's only three or four permitted exceptions that would even allow that to happen.
Perfect.
But the city manager is right, we'd have to pass an ordinance to permit that. So in any event, we've kind of gone through what a meeting is, but it also sets forth a majority of a quorum, and in the city, the majority of a quorum is three members. So you can't have three members either in person, gathered to talk about city business, or by video conference telephone, or telephone, electronic means, in any kind of contemporaneous manner. They don't, the statute doesn't define what a contemporaneous situation is. It would be nice if they did, but they don't. So if, for example, a council member were to send an email to all the other council members, that's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If a council member were to reply to the sender of that email, then that would have to be a violation of the Open Meetings Act because you only have two, not three. What you have to be careful for is you make sure that you don't have three or more, then you risk a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The other thing to keep in mind is, we send emails all the time. You can't hit reply to all. If you hit reply to all, that's no different than the council members all sitting in a room talking about city business. And also then pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, newly elected and appointed members of a public body have to go through the training as required by the state, and you've got 90 days to do that. And you'll get a certificate upon the successful completion of that, and we'd ask that you provide a copy of that certificate to both the city manager and the city clerk. The Freedom of Information Act doesn't really apply too much to the council, but the city gets a number of Freedom of Information Act requests. I think you'd be amazed, I know I have been, but we don't, I don't get too many Freedom Information Acts forwarded to me. But a year and a half, two years ago, I had one forwarded to me, it was in October of 2017. The city clerk keeps a record of every Freedom of Information Act that's filed. So if it was 2017, the first one that comes in, she would write 17-FOI-001. The one that was sent to me in October of that year had a number of 17-FOI-648. So that was in the middle of October, 648 Freedom Information Act requests.
Two thousand a year.
The city has five business days to respond to a request. The city can ask for an extension for an additional five business days to respond to that request. There's a longer list of exceptions to what can be disclosed and what can't, I won't bore you with that. The thing I want you to keep in mind is that with respect to your own personal devices, I'm sorry, my throat's still acting up. With respect to your own personal devices, the courts have held that each of you individually do not come within a definition of a public body, so you're not subject to the Freedom of Information Act. But there are exceptions. The first exception is if it's sent to a city account, so you each have your own city email accounts, board one, board two, board three, whatever. Those are subject to FOIA. If you use your personal electronic advice to send or receive a message during a city council meeting, that's subject to the Freedom of Information Act. Lastly, if it's sent to a majority of the members of the city council, that's subject to the Freedom of Information Act. So if there's such a request, city clerk, city manager will notify you and ask that you produce those emails. I think it's a good idea, and probably preferred, if you use your city email account as opposed to your own private emails, or your company emails. Because if a Freedom of Information Act request does come in, you've got an email that's subject to disclosure, you've got to go to your IT person, or whatever, and say, you know, can you give me all these emails because I got to go ahead and disclose them because I don't have them, and you can search them a lot better than I can. Conflicts, which is what Alderman Bassetti referred to earlier, there's statutory conflicts, and there are common law conflicts. The common law conflicts have pretty much now been codified. So a member of the city council cannot be financially interested either directly in your own name or indirectly in the name of some other person or entity, or organization, or whatever the case may be, in the sale of any article or expense, or any kind of contract for work, business, or sale of, or otherwise dealing with the city. There's exceptions with certain limitations. If a council member has direct interest or indirectly or indirectly interested as a member, has a seven and a half percent or less ownership share of the entity, then what they need to do is disclose that nature of that, the extent of the interest, abstain from voting, and the members of the city council holding office need to vote to award approved contract. There's also an exception if the amount of the contract exceeds 1,500, and the contracts awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, and the aggregate amount of the contracts would not exceed more than $25,000. Further, there's another exception if the amount of the contract doesn't exceed 2,000, or over the course of the next fiscal year, the total contracts awarded don't exceed 4,000, then the council member needs to publicly disclose the nature and the extent of the interest, abstain from voting on the award of the contract, and the contract needs to be approved by a majority vote of the city council. There are others where you own less than 1% share in an entity, again, publicly disclose, abstain from voting, the remainder of the council approves the majority of the vote. Touching briefly on what Alderman Bassetti was referring to earlier, if you abstain from a vote, your vote has to count. So if you abstain from voting, that vote's going to count with the prevailing side. But as long as you follow these rules, you don't have any kind of problem. Public utility contracts, contracts with public utility services, if you own less than, or more than seven and a half percent, then not otherwise barred, but if you own less than seven and a half percent, that may be okay. Or if you own less than 1% of a mutual fund that does business with the city, it's publicly traded on account, you refrain from evaluating on the contract, abstain from voting, and it's approved by a majority. Certainly, if you own 1% of a publicly traded company, good luck to you.
Ain't bad.
Indirect interest, I touched on that briefly. If you're a shareholder in a company, you're a partner in a company, whatever the case might be, that's an indirect interest. However, if a spouse should own an interest in a company, that is not considered to be a conflict per se. We've had an instance here, several years ago, where a member of the council was to vote on a collective bargaining agreement with the police union. Her husband was a member of that bargaining unit. Question came up as to whether or not that was a conflict for her to vote on. It's not a conflict for her to vote on. The cases hold that a spouse has a right to enter into, conduct their own business, to enter into their own contracts, it's considered to be their own property, and the money derived thereof, or the income thereof, is considered to be theirs. It's not what's often called, you know, property of the marriage. So there's no conflict in that regard. And then lastly, prevailing wage, you'll be happy to know that, for those of you who've been around, every June of every year, the city council has before it an ordinance to approve prevailing wage. That motion's not gotten a second, or been made for many years. Just so you know, that doesn't mean the council doesn't have, or the city doesn't have a prevailing wage. What happened in those instances, we defaulted to the county's prevailing wage, whatever they established. Effective June 1 of this year, Springfield has passed a law that says that Springfield and the state legislature will determine what the prevailing wages are. And so we need not deal with that this June and thereafter, as long as that statute's in existence. But we're still obligated to pay prevailing wage for any public works contracts. So I apologize for interruption with my voice and my coughing, I truly do apologize for that. If you have any questions, you can ask me. If you think of any questions after this evening, you can call me, you can email me. I prefer if you call me because I can type a lot, or talk a lot faster than I can type. But certainly, if you do have any questions, give me a call. And also with respect to the conflicts, if you think you've got one, the best thing to do is call the city manager and talk about it at a time.
I got one question.
Okay.
And it may pertain to Alderman O'Brien as well. Back when we were on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes.
We were encouraged to have statements of fact and reasoning in support of our votes.
Correct.
And verbalize those things.
Correct.
Is that, that's not the case then, when we're voting here? Okay.
No, the purpose for that was, when you use members, when both of you, as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, made recommendations to the city council, those were to be based on your facts and findings as a result of the hearings that you conducted. But that's not, that's not applicable here. And now that you're on the council, and prior to that perhaps, you've seen ordinances dealing with zoning matters, and one of the whereas clauses is always, you know, the council's reviewed and considered the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that necessitated you're both having to go through that process along with your fellow members.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, obviously Alderman Bassetti, actually in the code, it actually says when you vote, it's yea or nay. It doesn't actually say there is no explanation of how you're voting.
Well, that's what he...
I know, I'm just saying, that's in the code specifically, but again, so you don't have to give your opinion at that point in time. You can, if you want, but the code is very specific, only yays or nays on votes.
Typically, the opinion or justification for your direction comes at the discussion time.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it'd probably come up in discussion anyways.
Exactly.
Are there additional questions? Anything? Okay.
One final comment, I would want to say, it's been some time since we ordered the books, but the books are yours. There's a lot more reading. Kevin will finish it on the plane over the next two days. But we do want to reiterate a comment that city attorney Jim called to say, we did provide you with the list all the way up to many years down for Mayor Potem. So we wanted to provide you that too, and also the comment about Open Meetings Act, the link is on there, and obviously, it's really pass fail. If you get the wrong question, you go back and you do it again until you get it right. But you do need, at the end of it, just to get your certificate in there. And this was a document that was created back in 2012 because they really wanted training. And I would also reiterate, if you really want to, you can do some additional training on FOIA's. Specifically, the deputy clerk and myself have to do annual training on all this stuff. So when you have those certificates, just provide them to them, and happy reading.
If I can, just briefly, I also wanted to say too, with respect to the Open Meetings Act, the act provides that a violation of the Open Meetings Act is a Class C misdemeanor. A Class C misdemeanor is punishable up to 30 days in incarceration and/or a fine of $1,500. So it's taken very seriously, and I'm certainly positive that each and every one of you take it seriously and going forward will also take it very seriously. So with that being said, I thank you.
One question. In closed session, we had discussed the city manager's salary and goals. So would it be appropriate then to also discuss if evaluating his goals and his performance, that would, should also be occurred during a closed session as well?
That would be capable of going into a closed session.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So this was part one of a multi-part series?
Part two. I think part two would be better and more brief. The list I got from our city manager, who's always very thorough, was, I may have mentioned like three pages long of just talk about this, talk about this, talk about this, and it was just, you know, land use and zoning, you know, it was like, I could do that for two hours.
Oh, geez.
Hopefully my voice will hold out by then, but...
We'll build up to that. If there aren't any other questions on this particular topic, then we can move on to the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee. Manager Crumstock.
Thank you. Mayor Gallow, obviously before you, it's that time again, every 10 years we go through this. I've already been through the process with the city of Rolling Meadows twice. Each time we've done a complete count committee, the resolution that you actually have in front of you was provided by the Census Bureau. What I would make the comment to you is that we can eliminate some of the subcommittees, and what we've done in the past is just created one complete count committee. We open it up to what do you decide on one Alderman, two Aldermen, and then try getting members of the community, and that's also, we've been able to get some of the pastors, we've been able to get people from other committees. The biggest thing that a complete count committee really needs to do is get the word out there and make sure that people are comfortable with filling out the census, and also understanding that April 1st really is that census. The biggest push that we actually have in the last few years, and last time that we did this, was actually in East Park, making sure that we have Spanish translators, making sure that people feel comfortable, because it's very important that we do the complete count, not just for national effects, but for actually local representation. And part of that local representation is, once the census is completed and those tracks are turned back to the city of Rolling Meadows between Public Works, Community Development, and the city manager and the city attorney, we actually redo the wards. And what we do is make sure that the wards are very close in population-wise, so it's another reason why the complete count is really important. Final comment that I would actually say is that through the state of Illinois, you've heard me always talk about distributive funds and population funds. If our population is higher, typically we get more MFT money and some other amounts. So it really is important for the city of Rolling Meadows to have a good ad hoc complete count committee. And with that, I'd just leave it back to one or two Aldermen, and if you want to look at the resolution and make it shorter, I hope not longer.
Any questions on this? Anybody have any...
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Crumstock, could you please explain the type of collaboration between the Census employees, or the official counters, and the committee that Rolling Meadows had put together?
So in the past, what we've done is we've reached out to the Census Bureau, and they've actually either had a member come to meetings, or they've provided information to us. We pull a lot of the stuff from their website and additional. But actually, being with the Census counters, we have not walked with them, we have not been with them. But what we've done, and again, I'll use East Park as an example, we either had our own employees, Camp Havaka was there, Victoria Braun was there, or we had our own police department with translators, or we actually hired some translators to go in there and explain what the census was, making sure that they understood how important it was. If we knew when a census individual was going to be there, and we do not know typically, we would try to have someone there. But we wanted to make sure in the past that people knew, so we were not with them per se, but we tried inviting them into our meetings, and we pulled a lot of stuff off the website and translated. At one point, we were using probably six different Census Bureau translated forms for people to understand how important this was.
So then would you say that... So, then, would you say that the purpose of the committee is more to lay the groundwork for the Census counters themselves?
That is correct. And making sure that people understand the importance and understand why this really is necessary. And we also want people to feel comfortable. And I think that you can also look at some of the discussions that have been about what will the census questions be. We want people to feel comfortable why they're filling it out for the City of Rolling Meadows.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barry, I was wondering, when we did the last census, most of us at the table were not here then, was there any other area of the city specifically that you had issues with, in the sense that you didn't think we got a good count there? Because I know the count's crucial.
So, we were, obviously, I can talk about the last two because that's what I did. So, we were concerned about East Park because of what happened in the 2000s. So, in 2010, we did target that area. But we also started looking at Woodfield Gardens at that point in time, which is now, you know, a different name. But we did look more at the apartments because of what we felt the complete count showed, what we thought our numbers were from talking to the management to what people actually put together. But those were the two targeted areas that we had. But we also had people walk most of the areas. And we had a small enough group, but at the same point in time, that's why we use news and views. That's why we were using our water bills. We did have a few of the churches also put notices in there, but we tried the communication pieces.
When we had did the last one, do you feel like we were undercounted by much?
I still think that in those two areas that we did mention, we still were slightly undercounted. I think in the residential, we did very well.
Thank you for the answers.
Any follow-ups? Saying none. If any of you do feel as though you're inspired or inclined to participate as an alderman, alderwoman, alderperson in this committee, let me know. Otherwise, I'll follow up within the week or so and see if there is any engagement. And I'll forward that on to you, Manager Crumstock. But with that, I guess we can move on to Mr. Horn, Community Development and Public Works update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. As you may recall, in January of this year, we provided a, staff provided a memo identifying nine specific areas we wanted to work on. Just so, for your own use, the PowerPoints for later, if I have time. I just want to make you all aware of something, take the opportunity. Right now, I'm just going to walk through the memorandum. If you look at the memo, the italicized information is the information that was provided directly in January, word for word. And the bold, the underlined information is kind of where we're at with things. So, I'll just go, you know, really quickly through. If you have questions, let me know. But documentation was a critical thing. That's going to be ongoing for a really long time. But right now, we've completed a comprehensive permit application that allows contractors to combine all their, typically, you know, for, for a single-family home, you'd be required to do at least six separate permits. Now, you can do them all in one permit application. We're also providing a new roofing permit application that's a little easier. All of these are fillable PDFs online. So, repeat contractors can fill everything out except the homeowner's information, and they can regurgitate those over and over. Again, a site work permit application. Those three permits that I just described will take the place of approximately 12 different applications that we currently have on the website. The other thing we've, I'm really excited about for the residents' benefit is Don Wenzel's working on two different new kind of permits. One will be an over-the-counter permit that's a little more informative, easier to fill out, quicker to issue. And then, an express permit. The neat thing about the express permit is they're simpler permits. Currently, the way permits work is the permit, regardless of the application, regardless of the project type, all go to the plan reviewer, and they sit in a pile till he gets to them, and it's first in, first out. Now, what we're going to do is change the permit types for express permits. We're going to allow our newer inspectors to review those. Our plan reviewer will never even see them. They will not get review comments. They will simply be approved or not approved, period. And if they're not approved, then the inspectors will work with the contractor or the homeowner to revise the plan so it can be approved. So, that's the goal with that. We're still going to maintain a 10-day review time on that. But our goal is, as we get better and as our inspectors become more experienced, those review times will come down. And then, we'll try and establish a more aggressive review time on those. But that's a new thing that hopefully will help residents. The next item is communication and accountability. As you all know from, from the past, the previous director and myself tried to be in both places daily. That wasn't sustainable. So, we took an employee out of Public Works operations, proper, as Fred would say, and relocated them into Community Development. They're acting in a leadership role. It's actually Don Wenzel. He's doing a wonderful job, giving the department some direction and accountability to how we do things. And that's worked over really well. Also, department attitudes are getting a lot better as a result of some employee turnover. And I think just a newer pressure outlook on, on what our objectives are is helping a lot. Lastly, there's a huge, and I'll reiterate this throughout, there's a huge push on, on training right now. We have two brand-new inspectors. One inspector has some experience, the other one, internal experience, only working in the department for a period of time on light duty from Public Works. So, great inspectors, great assets to the city, just a little raw. So, we're hopeful that they'll be trained quickly. The third item is inspections. I won't go into the weeds about it. If you look back at the January memo, you'll see a lot more detail. But ultimately, what I believe was happening to our staff as a result of some retirements with positions that weren't refilled, our inspectors were trying to maintain a high-level inspections. And as a result of that, became very impatient with residents and, and business owners. So, what we tried to do is incorporate the use of a third-party inspection company to do very specific inspections, typically commercial, which they are also doing the plan reviews on. This not only allows for more consistent inspections because we have the same consultant doing those, it also allows our, our staff employees to keep costs down for residents by doing those inspections in-house. Simpler inspections, things they can learn from as they grow in their positions. The next item is inspection hours. I think this is one of the most critical things that we saw right away. Unfortunately, it takes a, a lot of, a lot of information, kind of a campaign to contractors, residents, to let them know how we're changing it, because they changed their operation because of it. We missed the boat this spring, so we're going to try and do that in the fall. So, we can roll it out in January when there's less inspections and people can get used to it. The way it is right now, which is very unique, is that we schedule a time for every inspection. So, if we have an inspector doing an inspection down on Golf Road, and then up on the west side of town, they have half hour to not only drive to the one inspection, do it, give the paperwork, then drive all the way to the other one. And, and what's happening is, you know, our inspectors might be three minutes late, and our staff is getting phone calls, "So, where's my inspector?" What's more typical is a four-hour window. I think that's unreasonable. We can manage a two-hour window. And so, what we'll do is seven to nine, nine to 11, 11 to one, and one to three. That's what we're going to propose. And I'm, I'm confident it can work. I, the community I came from used that, and it can work. It just will be a little bit of a change for residents. Next item is fee schedule. I actually was working with one of our employees on that today. We are about halfway done with the fee revisions. It's very, very complex and very complicated. The current fee schedule is very difficult to read. We're at a point now where we've gone through everything and kind of fixed all the low-hanging fruit. We're now to the more complex things that we need to either do some calculation, understand, to be able to tell the council how we derive those numbers, or we have to compare it to other communities to make sure we're not way off on our pricing. Building code amendments, again, that's a fall project, which our building officials will work on, adopting a new, more updated version of the International Code Council code set, which helps developers, architects, builders, because they're usually on the current set. And it also allows our staff to go through years and years of amendments that really were never vetted out as new code sets were adopted. So, that will allow us to reduce our amendments, pages of amendments in the code. Zoning code amendments, we just started that. Staff is working with Tuscan Consultants, which the city council approved a contract with, to update the zoning code. We currently have the primary framework of the zoning, oh, zoning code scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission in July. So, that will be the first step in a long process of updating the zoning code. The comprehensive plan, as you all know, was approved in April of this year. I'm not going to add a lot to that as it had many of its own meetings. And the last item that I had was staffing. I want to thank the previous council for providing us support with the clerical staff. That's very beneficial and helping a lot at, at being able to process things quickly. We have two new inspectors, as I said before. So, emphasis is on training over the next six to eight months. And the third-party inspections are helping our review times and are helping our staff's ability to be more customer service focused. That's our real, what we're really striving for with our staff is that we're putting a premium on the customer service aspect. You know, it's, you can tell someone their inspection is not approved and, and not get in an argument over it. And so, we really are working hard towards that. The last thing I wanted to do is talk a little bit about, take an opportunity to basically give kudos to a couple of our divisions in Public Works. I'm really proud of some recent improvements. And so, I'm taking this opportunity to, to share those with you. The vehicle service divisions, as I mentioned in our Vehicle Replacement Committee this, this evening, they have been doing upfitting of police, fire, and Public Works vehicles that we would normally pay a contractor to do. As a result of the work they're doing, we're saving between $2,500 and $4,000 per vehicle. We also have much better service experienced by our internal customers. You can ask them. They are much happier with the work that our staff does than the third-party consult, or contractor. So, I'm very proud of those guys and, and really proud of our utility division. The superintendent and supervisor, Dan Saveska and Jeff Stewart, those divisions that, Underground and Water, didn't play good in the sandbox a while ago. Since they've taken over and under their leadership, they've come together. They've really worked really well together. And I won't list all the items there, but I would hope that you would take a minute to just look at some of the cost savings they're producing with efficiencies and an openness to changing the way things had always been done. Two specific things I'm very proud of is their evaluation and refinement of our Julie ticket process. That's saving hundreds of hours a year. That's not an exaggeration in time. If I were to explain to you the process, it was overwhelming. They've eliminated a lot of that. And the other one that I want to point out specifically is, especially since the council has been very supportive of our SCADA upgrades, two recent improvements as a result of the Phase 1 SCADA improvements eliminate about $18,000 worth of phone fees annually. And that's every year. So, again, there's more of that to come with the Phase 2 improvements. But I felt it important to point those things out today. That's all I have on the improvements. If I can, I just want to walk for the benefit of the city council. When you get calls about the status of certain projects, I want to show you what, where you can direct residents to get that information. If you go to the city's front page, you'll notice there's a, a link there that says "construction projects." They'll simply click that. Oh, there you go. Sorry. Thank you. That will bring you to this page. On that page, there are tabs on the top which, which categorize the different projects, types of projects. And on the left is our buttons and an arrow. There's also a blue arrow at the bottom of the screen. I kind of clipped it off a little there. But that allows you to scroll through the project. So, when you select a project... Hmm. Thought it worked. Oh, there it is. You select a project, for example, roadway projects 2019, street resurfacing. It gives you a very brief description on the project, and then a link for you to click for more information. Barry, if you wouldn't mind clicking that. There we go. It brings you to that project-specific construction description page. It tells you when the start date, completion date, the bid opening, who the project manager is, who the contractor is, and how much we, the city council awarded the project for. And then, the last link, you'll see regular project updates. They're really what residents are interested in. This is a really big change for us. It's going to let residents who are not specifically adjacent to the project know what's going on in the project. Historically, we've just sent letters out to those residents who are within the limits. And people who drive through it every day never under, know what's going on. So, this is helpful. The residents can also click the "Stay Notified" or "Notify Me" links, which are on all the pages. And they can just sign their email up. And every time there's a update on the page, they'll get an email. And, and they can look at that. So, that's all I have on process updates. I hope I didn't spend too much time. So, if there are any questions.
No, that's good. I appreciate this. I know, I know staff is appreciative of the changes that are going on and residents as well. Early on, as an alderman, I had some residents approach me for some of the issues with community development. And being able to go back to them and let them know that there are some critical changes taking place. But then, more importantly, what about some of the common sense corrections that need to take place or that are probably taking place? But for example, if a resident is building a new house or adding an addition portion onto their house, they submit their plans and drawings. And some of the aspects call out the request to know which specific brand of HVAC unit, right, the air conditioner. And really, they should just be able to provide the appropriate tonnage for the condenser and then move on until the appropriate item is purchased. Because a lot of times, the, the general contractor or subcontractor can get a different machine for a different rate.
Yeah, I understand that. And we are working through those. We try and, we are trying to encourage our, what's called, conditions of permit. So, for example, in your, as you said, an air conditioning unit, what we can require is a condition of permit that simply states, "Provide a cut sheet on the specific unit you're going to install prior to inspection." And that can move it through the review process. We are, we're trying to move forward. I think we are getting better than we were two years ago. I'm fairly certain of that. In the past, we never issued a temporary certificate of occupancy. We have done several of those in the last six months. Those are not unique to do that. They were not ever done here. And so, we are trying to provide a more common sense approach. I will tell you that Don Wenzel is bringing that to the division, division of Public Works. And it's hard. It is a hard change to make, but it's a change we have to make. And it, it doesn't open up the city to any liability at all. Because when you do it as a condition of permit, and you sign the condition of permit, it means that that is now part of the approved plan.
Right.
So, there's no really exposure of liability to the city.
Thanks.
Sure.
Additional questions?
Just one other comment. And obviously, it's come from the council before, but about weekend hours, we are having those discussions with staff.
I'm sorry.
So, we have not forgotten that one. That did come from the council. We are having those discussions with staff. When we do know those weekend hours, obviously, we're going to be posting those. But some of the other comments that have come from council members, we're still working through some of those.
Thank you. Follow-ups? Nick, but Matt's?
Thank you, Mayor. The third-party inspection firm that you've started to use, who were you using? How did you obtain them? Is that contractual? I mean...
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, so the company we're using is BNF Technical. And quite honestly, I have, I have over a decade of experience with them. I know what their services are, I know what they provide. It is really a service-for-service contract. So whatever the costs are for their work goes right through to the applicant. There is no cost to the city to use that. We use other consultants as well, fire safety consultants, thinking of plumbing, plumbing inspector?
Grievous.
Grievous and Kraus Structural Inspectors, or Structural Reviewer. There is no cost to the city, it's simply a pass-through cost to the applicant. We, as a staff, try to make sure that the costs they're requesting are consistent with other communities. It's really hard to say it's consistent with us, because our fee schedule is so convoluted, it, as I've said before, I could give the same permit application to four different employees and get four different permit fees with a more complex project.
So that is the question, how are we making sure that the fees that these outside contractors are charging are in line with what their other communities are charging for those same services to their residents? Because, because sometimes consultants' fees vary by community, and I'm not looking to see Rolling Meadows residents pay more than is fair than maybe Oak Park, they might pay less for that same service from the same consulting service.
And I appreciate that. When, before we entered into any agreement with them, we did do some investigation to make sure the fees they were proposing were consistent. They can't change the fees unless we authorize the change to occur, or they give us notice. The other part that is, is the primary reason we're using them is we do not use them on residential projects. That's what our, our in-house inspectors, we try to use on residential projects to keep those costs at a minimum, so we don't have to pass on those significant costs. The only time we use and a consultant on a residential home is for a brand-new, single-family home, that we do use our engineering consultant to do site engineering review, because it typically ties into a site, a subdivision design that was approved prior to the home.
So, for example, the proposed development on the old Domex property, it's multifamily, I'm assuming that will all be outside engineering?
Yeah, because those are considered commercial buildings. Even though it's residential homes, the construction type is considered commercial, because there's more than two homes connected.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Hey, fellows.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I might combine a couple, it was actually ironic timing coming over to the night tonight, we had an email with a resident fully supportive of looking at the ordinances, the changes, things like that, because they have had some issues, which obviously we're addressing. And it might just be for my own notification, being a newer council member, and it might tie together the permitting, the fees, the inspections. Is, some of the things I've heard from, it's more on the commercial side, is that they'll get the inspection back, it's not approved, but it won't help them fix the problem. And I don't know if that's a legality thing from the city, is that we're not there meant to tell people how to engineer things or things like that, but is that something that's going to be addressed, or is it really the, like, a hands-off approach, is we'll tell you what's wrong, but we're not, because that's what they say, we have to pay multiple times for permitting fees and inspection fees, where if we could just find out how to fix it, it could save some time and money, too.
It is a touchy subject, because usually, an inspector, even the inspect, they call them, construction observation engineers that we have on a site, the one, the first thing they talk about is, "I can tell you if it's wrong, but I can't tell you what to do to fix it." However, we, especially at the plan review stage, we are really trying to push our staff to be more corrective in their, in their discussions with architects and residents, to not only say, "This doesn't meet code," to say, "This doesn't meet code." To achieve code, you need to have, you know, handrails. The handrail's 34 inches, it doesn't meet code. Well, that doesn't help me. Yep, the handrail needs to be a minimum of 36 inches high, and da, 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 da. So we are trying to do that and get better at that. Again, it's, it's right now, with changing and evolving all these things, some of that is slower than I'd like to see it. So right now, staff is holding on to some of those old things, so the responses become shorter to get the review dimes down. So we're in totally agreement with that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Horn, thank you so much for giving us these summaries of all these improvements. Is there anything that you can, that you would be able to suggest for us as city council to help you achieve some of these goals faster?
That's a wonderful question. As I, as I like to say, the best thing for us, really, is if anyone comes to you about any issue, I know as alderman, as mayor, you want to help them, I would just ask that your first question be, "Have you talked to staff?" If that, if that answer is no, please ask them to talk to us. We have a commercial business owner in the community that has had very bad things to say about community development, very bad things to the previous mayor, their aldermen, in the newspaper, everything. And I've been involved in community development since May of 2017, and I have not one time had a conversation with that person, nor has Fred. And so that's the biggest problem, is sometimes it gets to your level and it becomes a problem before we've, at staff, have even had a chance to try and address it. That would be my one thing, if I could ask anyone to do, would be that, is to just ask that complainant if they've called staff. And then if they have, absolutely, I'll take my lumps, but...
That's fair. And I would actually add to that, obviously, you first ask if you've talked to staff, and then if they say that they have, please call staff, and we will give you our side. And obviously, we document every permit that comes in, we stamp in, when the review goes out, it has a date and everything. Sometimes it's that the owner of the property, remember, the owner of the property is using an architect or a construction manager, and they're not getting the right information to that owner. And it's very easy for us to sit down and give the rest of the pieces. So typically, community development will deal with who's ever doing on that permit, with, you know, what they complied for and what they did. It's easy for us to interact with only that individual. There are many times that I'm interacting with the owner, because they have to stay with their procedures, I can stay dealing with the owner, and then the owner actually gets the right side. This also deals with, if someone's asking about a public works project, if they haven't talked to staff and then they're coming to you, please get our side of the story, because many times, we will understand what happened on that public works project, or if it's a facility, we can explain why we have certain things that are set up for security or other pieces. But again, that would be our easy answer, and there are a lot of people that, they don't have the full communication, but when they do have all the pieces that we can provide to them, it goes a lot smoother.
Yeah, the one example I will give you that is not unique to Rolling Meadows, I dealt with this in my previous job, is, for example, they would say, Alderman Snoyke, "I submitted my permit on March 1st and I still don't have it." And that's the information they give you. But then, what they don't give you is, "On March 15th, we sent them back comments, and they kept the comments for seven weeks." They don't give you that part of how long they've had the permit. And it's, and that, it's just a way to, to kind of get somebody to move the process along, I understand that, but sometimes you don't have all the facts, and that's my big thing, so...
And as a follow-up with regards to some of these other, I would say, almost smaller proj, not smaller projects, these are large projects, but for, for more specific tasks that you would want to get done, is there anything else that you would, we would want, such as a subcommittee or additional staff, in order to be able to check off some of these, like, the fee schedules, and making sure that that's consistent and comparable?
Mr. Chris, I will never turn down extra staff. Right now, I think we've been working for almost a year and a half on a succession plan. I feel like one of the, if you read the second-to-last paragraph in that memo, "We have not been fully staffed in Public Works since January of 2018." Nobody's fault, it just has been retirements or reassignments, and then community development and all those things. I feel strongly that within the next two to three months, we will both be fully staffed, and I don't sense any retirements in the future. And so I would like to, before I propose any, anything, anything where we need help, I'd like to at least see what we can do with a full staff. I guess that's what I would ask for right now, is just a little patience, and, and tell me if there's a problem, when it, when it comes up, and allow me an opportunity to correct it. Right now, that's all I would ask for.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate the council giving us that part-timer, the full-timer, because it's really helped a lot.
Absolutely.
Any further questions on this particular subject? Thank you, guys, for the questions you were asking, it was great. Mr. Horn, we'll keep you up here in the hot seat and just continue on with the community message sign at 2550 Quentin Road.
This, I expect, will be very short, brief, I should say. As many of the council probably is aware, on April 11th of this year, we had a public meeting for residents living out near Quentin Road, on the east and west side of Quentin Road, as a result of easement resolution that came to city council to install a city public information sign. Just to give you a little facts about those meetings, I know several of you were there. There were approximately 60 residents here at that time. Most, if not all, the residents that lived in the area where the sign was proposed were opposed to the sign. We had great dialogue with the residents, I think the residents, several came up to me after, appreciated the opportunity to voice their concern. But ultimately, I think the minutes, I'm not going to go through all the issues, they're all very valid reasons. It was determined at that meeting, it was the sense of staff that there was not a desire to have the sign there. But just a follow-up for the alderman, or the council that was not part of that, in January of this year, there was a sign appeal brought to Planning and Zoning, where it was, where the sign appeal was approved. In February, we brought, or staff brought, the purchase of that sign to city council, where it was approved. And then in March, when we brought the easement to city council, which we had been working with the Joint Action Water Agency, that's when there was discussion about that, and it was, the item was postponed. As a result of all those conversations, staff prepared the memo that's before you, and, oops, excuse me, and as part of that memorandum, if you go to the second page, there are four questions that we just need some direction on. One point I wanted to make is, this, the investigation of putting this sign on the west side of town had started before we started the comprehensive plan. However, as part of the comprehensive plan, we found out very quickly that there seemed to be a disconnect between the community for residents that live west of Route 53 from those who live east of Route 53. There was kind of a "we're left out" mentality. So that's what helped us pursue that, that's what motivated us. Jawa is an agency we work with that was an easy-acquired easement, that's what really dictated some of those decisions. But the questions before you for direction are really quite simple. There's, and I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to read these, or you want me to read through them all, but we would be looking for direction on all four of those items. If you want me, I can read those and just do them one by one, or I can read through them all, however you prefer.
Well, let's take them one by one, so you can go ahead and get some direct feedback on them. Do you know what, if you want to read them, have at it.
Sure, sure, absolutely. The first item would be, "Proceed with the project as is, continue with fabricating and installing the sign, bring back the easement as was originally proposed, and move forward with no changes."
So by quick show of hands, is there anybody that would agree to that, to give direction to staff? Is there any that are for that? Any opposed to that particular option?
Is there any discussion on that, first?
Okay, yeah, let's, let's back up one step. Do you want to discuss these individually then, at this, at this time?
I'm happy to do it, however.
Have at it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I was the person who brought this forward, thinking that it would be something positive for my area. Obviously, I learned quite late in the process that many people in my area did not like it. I still think the theory behind it is valid, the location, obviously, is not. So I guess I would like to see us consider it somewhere else, but I'm not in a position to make this recommendation, as to where to put it, but I would definitely not be voting to put this here, as I promised the people that I have talked to about this, there's a number of them in the audience right now, so I am not supporting this anymore. Thank you.
Very well. Further comments on this particular point?
I would just like to, I would echo what Mr. Cannon said as well, I mean, it appears there's no, or little desire to have this there. However, being a little bit involved in the comprehensive plan and hearing what, you know, not just one person, but several people said, I do believe there is hopefully a place for something like this on the west side of town.
Okay. Anything else?
I would probably just second that, Mr. Vessetti, being part of the planning and zoning that looked at this in the comp plan, it's clearly that something like this is needed. Not that we had 60 people attend in support of the location at the planning zone, we did have some attendance that was supportive of the location, it probably was not in their backyard, like some residents had, but there's definitely a need for it, so hopefully, that's the compromises, we can find a location that's more feasible.
Okay. So, and just to be clear, you're, you're saying there is, there is a need for some sort of informational signage to exist on that?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Not necessarily on that.
In that geography.
Right, not on that specific location, but on the west side of 53, based on feedback during the focus groups at the plan, at the focus groups for the comp plan.
And that's great that you mention that, I do, I will echo the sentiment of the residents who were here at that town hall, that they, they are not inclined to believe that a sign is the most opportune way or beneficial way to get messaging out there. But to each their own, it's good to consider. Then I guess we'll move on to the second point?
Correct. The, the second item is to not proceed with the project at all, and rescind the purchase of, the purchase of the proposed sign by resolution at a future council meeting.
Discussion on this item?
My initial thought is that would not be the best way to go, is because I think it was clearly heard that residents do want some type of communication on the west side of 53. So I would not just, I would not be in favor of wiping the project altogether.
Anyone else? Anybody else for that one? Manager Crumstock?
Can I make it a little quicker? I think from what I've heard from the council so far, and not putting words, I think number three is probably going to be the easiest vote for us, because if we keep on going, what I'm just trying to make it a little quicker.
Yeah.
Do you not want to be here all night?
I'm trying not to, but...
I should have done this differently.
Okay. So then, then, go ahead and read three.
Yeah, option number three is staff's recommended choice, which would be to not install the proposed sign at 2550 Quentin Road. However, to not rescind by resolution the existing purchase, instead, staff will work to find some options for a new location, and we will bring those back to council and seek their input as to the best location and opportunity available to still meet the needs of the community on the west side of Route 53. The one item, I think, I, I don't know that it's in here, that I think would be important for the council to consider, is that we still approve the easement on the 2550 Quentin Road site. Given all the work that has occurred to secure that, it wouldn't be bad to have it there for future need, if the city council were to decide at a future time, there was like a city entry marker, or a landscaping amenity, or something like that there. A park bench, I don't know, it's near a bike path, correct?
So, let me just throw this out there for you. I mean, this particular parcel of land that we're looking to purchase, it's not really the hottest commodity. the hottest commodity. So it's not like if we were to table this, because residents in that ward were vehemently opposed to moving forward with this and having messaging in this location because it's just There is always opportunity later to go back and revisit purchasing of this parcel at that point. But given the fact that that ward is able to activate so well for communication, I think it might be in order, for example, number four, where you can put together a group of folks, residents in that area, to tell us how they would like to receive information.
Sure.
It's just my two cents on that.
Sure. I'm happy, obviously happy to do that. I want to make sure though, just in case I didn't take this through the entire process, we're, I believe the parcel we're looking at is about the size of this table, and there is no charge for it, if I understand correctly, or $1, $1. So I just want to make sure everybody knows there's not a financial obligation, it's really an agency we work with. And again, only because they went through their whole ordinance and everything that I even brought it up, so.
So it's a matter of administrative work and not necessarily dollars?
It really was just that, I just want to make sure everyone was, had the correct information, so.
Okay.
So we could, we could do that as long as we made a motion not to put an electronic sign there, so we would put those residents at ease.
Yes, that is correct. Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
So typically, what we would do is accept the easement, and then rescind the sign at this point in time, because that sign was actually being fabricated for that area, because as you know, it has a big dive and everything like that. And then what we would do is, number three, look for another location and then communicate to the residents when we found something.
And, and just as for the council's benefit, there are some potential opportunities for cost, excuse me, for the council's benefit, there are some potential opportunities for cost sharing with other agencies. Again, we've just started initial discussions about those, but I think they would be intriguing to the council to hear about those. So we certainly would pursue those if, if directed.
Okay. Any further discussion on point three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, just to reiterate with, with Rob said, we're not purchasing this, we're just asking, we're going to buy a $1 easement to use.
That is what it is, it's a $1 easement.
And the other thing, I just, you know, to give a little bit of historical bent to this, you know, I've been talking about this for a long time, but it's, but as a group, the city council's been talking about using signs as one way to better communicate with the public. It's not the only way, but it is a way. The signs we've had up seem to be relatively successful, I think people were very happy with the one we have out in front here. We have them planned for both the new fire stations. So it's not just Quentin Road only. I think that historically, we try to look at this and try to open up again, it's just another opportunity to communicate, one way to communicate with people. Obviously, we do Facebook and Twitter, and we have the news and views, but, and you talk to an awful lot of people, they don't even know what news and views are. So it's just another avenue of trying to communicate, communicate better than I'm talking, and then hopefully give people more information so they can react to events or whatever, whatever else we want to put up there. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Horn, we had some of the comments in the packet from the April 11th meeting that some residents asked if there were any studies out of the traffic committee for, for safety reasons, but my question would be if we could do any additional research or studies on what receives the most amount of traffic from Rolling Meadows residents.
For like, like hits on a website or something like that?
Yes, but for physical people. So if you have, at a certain intersection, if you know that, well, it's this first one here, the northeast corner of Euclid Avenue and Hicks Road, that's on your way usually to 53, is that going to be something that's more popular than Quentin Road? Where some of the residents had explained that very few people actually use that particular road for visibility reasons.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I mean, I, I, once we vetted out the, the locations, yeah, I mean, there are probably a variety of ways we could extract that information from the public. Traffic counts, I'm sure would be one item. Survey, Survey Monkey to get an idea of people in the area, what they might be interested in. Most of the corridors we're looking at are either east-west, north-south, main, kind of heavy two-lane or four-lane thoroughfares. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, and so the expectation is, is that we're not going to be able to put an electronic message board sign on all of them. And as I said before, there are some potential funding opportunities with partnering. So I think all those things kind of cohesively will, will try and provide the council with as much information as possible, so you can make a decision on which way to go. But yeah, I can see, I think I'd like to get the list refined a little bit more, then determine based on what you guys recommend as a list of, of locations you would like to pursue, then refine it a little more. I don't want to, you know, survey the entire western half of the community to decide where to put two signs. I would prefer refine that a little more. But great, great recommendation.
Go ahead, Alderman Bodmas.
One of these listed is the current fire station, 16 at 2411 Plum Grove. And so I've heard at this table that certain people are interested in selling that property once the new station is built to re-cap or some of the costs, et cetera. So if we were thinking about putting a sign there, we might have to separate out now a parcel for that sign, rather than go back later and try to, to do so after the parcel's no longer ours.
Correct. It's good forethought. It makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick point of clarification, because in talking to some of the residents, an idea was, why don't we use the two new fire stations? We'd have one on the south side of town, on Hicks, and then we've got the one here in front of the communities, or the, the city hall. Is that what, just for my own clarification, is that the plan now, is that what you were referencing, Mr. Cannon, is just for the fire, so we'd already have two additional ones?
You already have two additional that are planned and scheduled. It's talking still about that section.
Further west.
Yeah, further west. Obviously, the Hicks, the Hicks site is right adjacent to Route 53, so really trying to get west and north of that area.
Perfect. Further discussion on this one?
The only thing I'm thinking is, at least with the list here, it definitely does need to be refined. A lot of these locations are really not that far away from the new fire station, and would kind of be redundant in some ways. So I'd rather not put one up at all versus putting one that's too close to the other one.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Diazis.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Vissesi. If our goal is to try to convey information that's happening in and around the city to more residents on the west side of the city, then I think it's contingent that we get a new list of viable locations. And then, once we have that list, Mr. Snor, Lars Point, sorry, I'll get it right yet. Let's find out which is going to be the best, so we can get it narrowed down to a couple, maybe three, and then send out 610 more letters, because we don't want to have this thing all blow up in our faces again. And we might find out that people just don't want the sign period in the locations we've selected. So for the time being, I think the first thing is if our goal is to communicate to residents on the west side, if that is our goal, then select locations that achieve that goal, and then, let's then do a survey, and then come back with, with final results.
Yep. So, perfect. And to that point, that was about getting those in that particular ward without stepping on your toes, Alderman Cannon, connecting with the residents in, in the first ward over there, and where they would see value in, in where their eyes go regularly when they're driving or commuting to and from their homes. And then use those locations, bring them back to Public Works, to the council, and then see if there is viability with any of those locations that they come up with. If there aren't any further questions or comments here, concerns, then I will open the floor up for the name on the list here, which is Nancy M. Is there anybody left to, to speak?
I had one last comment, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Horn, is it possible that we could pursue both option three and four concurrently? As I see that, perhaps option four would actually support option three in the future?
Yes.
Making a subpoint.
Mayor, if I could just clarify, what we're envisioning is bringing them back three potential options, along with maybe some pros and cons, and maybe some visual photos to see what it looks like. And then once we get feedback from the council as to wanting to pursue those, then we would send out and look for feedback, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And we understand, I'm sorry, too, Mr. Mayor, we would understand that a potential location change could impact pricing.
It could.
In theory, right?
Because again, they have to redesign.
Right.
This one was designed with, obviously a little bit different. But again, reiterating, three and four are really what we're discussing.
Yep. Thank you. So with that, I'll call up Nancy, and if you could just state your first name and the street that you live on?
I'm Nancy, and I live on Mill Creek Lane.
Thank you.
I'm in my Cannon's Word, Word one. When I saw the agenda item today, I went on Facebook and spoke to all the neighbors in my group, we have a Facebook group, and most of these people were at the meeting on April 11th, and their answer to me is, why are we still pursuing a sign? It's $40,000, our neighborhood is full of potholes, we have flooding issues, $40,000 would be better spent on flooding and dealing with the road issues than a sign that people said that they, they will not read, they're not going to benefit out of. One of the reasons why the sign here works is that you're at a stoplight. These proposed sites are not stoplights. I was looking at the list, Hartung and Quentin is going to be just as bad as Sandberg, if not worse. When you're in Quentin over there by Hartung, the road curves. It's a very hard intersection to make that turn out of that neighborhood, and the last thing we need is more distracted drivers in that area. It's a low point of the road, it's flooded, when it's winter, it's snowy, it's a really dangerous intersection to begin with, and no stoplights, so we really don't need a light there. Even more so, putting the sign in our neighborhood park, which is actually Palatine, not even rolling, Rolling Meadows, you know, Park District over there. The people that go to the park are either our neighborhood or all the apartments from Sandberg. It's not a really big Rolling Meadows area, and it's a little neighborhood, you're not going to have any through traffic. The people out of my neighborhood, they really want to know Facebook, Twitter, you know, people are now knowing that you can sign up electronically on the website to get emails. They say in this day and age, we really don't want a sign on our edge of town, it's not the best way to use money, and we really don't, we really don't want it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's perfect. Thank you. Well, moving on from that, if there isn't any additional conversation, then we can go ahead and, and move on to something a little bit more festive, but still with lights, tree lighting and relocation for 2019. Ms. Sezak.
Actually, before Laurie Sezak, Assistant to the City Manager, actually starts, we do have some other information just to mention when we're in community events.
Oh, yeah.
And I will let her mention that before we get to the tree discussion.
Thank you, City Manager. We just had a community events foundation meeting, and we were very happy to announce that one of our volunteers has been very diligent since last summer in contacting a certain company that owns Clydesdale's horses, and we will be getting them for our Fourth of July parade this year. So it's very exciting, we're meeting with police and Public Works to take the necessary steps for security and space allotment and every, and marketing and everything that goes with that. So it should be a historic Fourth of July this year, and we're happy to announce it this evening.
We have free samples?
That was last year with the Wi-Nim mobile.
We'll work on that.
So now we're actually back to the holiday tree and ceremony.
Yes, so I'm up here because, as you know, I'm a representative of many community events in the city, and I have heard from various residents over the years and community event foundation volunteers, that a better location for the annual tree lighting ceremony and tree location should be considered. So as you can see from your packet, we have a little bit of history, I'm not going to read it, but I'd like to just kind of move on to dis, location discussions that city staff has had, and that we would like to propose to city council. And the main reasons for these location suggestions would, would be that we would like to see it along the Kirchhoff Road corridor, we would like it to have available parking and shopping, a shopping district nearby, the capacity to support, you know, a fairly large crowd, the, the capacity to support electrical needs, and a lot that hopefully is currently owned by the city. So some actions that we would like city council to consider, or to, to know that we are going through with this, with some of these actions right now, Public Works has identified a tree that is in the heart, the yard of a resident, and that person is willing to donate this tree, they believe it is a perfect size and type of tree for this, for this ceremony of ours. They would take the steps to plant this new evergreen in the determined location. They would like for the council to consider a city easement of the corner of this proposed new location, which by the way, I'm sorry, is the green space across from city hall here. So that if it is sold in the future, as I know discussion has been underway, that we then will remain with the easement. We would like to develop a plan to secure adequate electricity needs by using power from the streetlights at this location. And then everybody, Public Works, city departments will gather together to determine the best traffic flow and parking plan for the actual event in December. So in summary, we are looking for city council to approve a change of location for this holiday tree and lighting ceremony, for approval for the tree to be, I guess, transplanted, removed from the person's yard, obviously that would be their doing, but then for your approval to then get it transplanted to this location, and then approval for electrical, the necessary electrical work to take place. And then one thing we are looking to doing, it would be in addition to the event that goes on, as you know, we have a spaghetti dinner that goes, that takes place down the road at Fire Station 15. We were thinking maybe a on-the-sidewalk horse and wagon, which they convert to looking like a sleigh, even though it is on wheels, might be a nice little addition to, to add to that event. And it could then double as a way to get from one location to another.
Clydesdale. They can't be there every year.
Would that, that sleigh shuttle operate round trip then to return those individuals who rode it to the fire station?
Yes. And I mean, if that was something we did want to look into, we would certainly sit down, map it out, make sure that the police department is in agreement with it, Public Works is in agreement, that the wagon fits on the sidewalk and make the necessary turns. We've got horses involved, so it's all about horses. So yes, we would definitely see if we could make that work.
And then I guess, Manager Crumstock, do you believe that we could take these information points, the four of them, and consolidate them to a single vote when it comes time, if council is?
If council has approval, and just say yes, that would go a long direction to what we need to do.
Okay. Any conversation or discussion on these points?
That's a great idea. Yeah, a couple of ideas. Do we have an approximate cost for the electrical work, the tree replanting, some kind of a budget that we would think that it would cost to make this piece of land there ready for Chris, for holiday season?
I'm going to ask Mr. Horn to answer that for you.
And my answer is going to be pretty poor. We'll have to bring that back, the cost estimate. We have had preliminary conversations with the contractor doing the Kirchhoff Road work, the similar work that is required to be done for Kirchhoff Road is required to be done for the tree lighting. So we're pursuing that right now, but we haven't received a price yet. The discussions regarding the tree have just kind of formalized in the last two to three weeks. So I, quite honestly, any of the costs you're looking at right now, I don't have firm numbers on. I would be, I would hesitate to, to share any of my thoughts with the council at this time.
Okay. Okay. One other thought, this is, it feels like a stop-get measure. If the fire station is no longer going to be there, and it's going to be, one of them will be on Hicks, which is more or less adjacent to Kirchhoff, and there is parkland that the city already kind of is involved with off of Kirchhoff and immediately west of 53, would that be a place to plant the tree? Is there enough space there to have the tree lighting there? And then it And then, it could be a permanent location rather close to the fire station, assuming that the spaghetti dinner is going to continue on and on. Then, maybe that would be a better location if we were going to sell the property across the street. So, just curious if that was a location that was under consideration.
I think there have been some internal discussions, and I probably don't want to discuss anything further than that. You probably want to talk to the city manager, but there, yeah, there were discussions about utilizing that site. Currently, there's a vacant home that is between the proposed fire station and the Rotary Park. Right there, there has been, there's been discussions about putting the tree at Rotary Park and bringing people down from the new fire station. But, again, the current fire station proposed will not have an enormous parking lot. I think maybe, was it, very 12, 12 or 15 parking spaces?
Yes.
So, that would be a concern right now for parking.
Going back to this proposed location, the easement, do we have a theoretical size that we're already looking at, and then compounding that with how much space we would need for residents and attendees? Because eventually, there hopefully will be some acreage sold, and then we can have, I don't know if we have to factor in contingency clauses with the sale of that property?
Potentially. That, the easement discussion would really not occur until a development came through, or if we wanted to pursue something earlier. My recommendation just currently would be a 50 by 50 square at the very corner. Right now, I believe the area is used really well for signage and such, so I think it's a positive thing for the community anyways. It certainly, if the tree wasn't kept there as a holiday tree, we could certainly integrate the community sign with landscaping and still make it a nice amenity for the city, the city center, as people drive through. I don't think it would, again, my thought with those kind of easements are that they don't hurt the city at all to have those, and my expectation is it would not hurt the development at all, because I don't think we would want the development to build that close to that intersection.
Right. And it's more or less to allow those who end up eventually developing that location to acquiesce and allow gatherings, congregations of folks to be there on the property, depending on what ends up happening there, right?
Totally understand, but to, I think, Alderman Budmat's point, this may be a preliminary thing until a more long-term solution can be found. But, again, right now, the lot is vacant, and we have the city lot right here, and the retail area is a block away, and so I think there's a lot of good benefits to using this area. Again, one of the things we talk about internally is trying to draw people who don't live in the city to the community. And, again, anything we can do that can be visibly seen from Route 53 that encourages someone to drive off and say, what's that big tree lit for? And, you know, anything like that would be a benefit, I think, to the community.
Okay. Additional comments, questions? Alderman Diastis?
I need more information before I can say yes or no to this. I don't know if we should plant a tree, or just put one up like Chicago does.
Rent one.
I'd like to see what we're going to do for parking, because I don't know where the parking is going to be. Is it going to be in the grass? Well, you don't have that much parking here either, not compared to the shopping center. So, I'm sorry, I can't say, I cannot support this at this point in time with the information that we have. Once we get more information, you know, we can talk about it, but I recall that that piece of property cost the city a million dollars back when, and it's probably not worth a million, but cutting out 250 square feet, or whatever amount that you want to cut out, could be detrimental for us trying to sell the property. Which, by the way, there should be a sign out there, and we should be selling it now, too, because I think the tith is over. Right? It's not yet?
Nope. There's still got a few years.
On that piece?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I thought we were going to sell that for this year. But temporarily, maybe, but I need more information before I can support this one way or another.
So, let me rephrase this, then. Instead of providing staff direction on these points, could we provide staff the opportunity to investigate this further and come back with more details? And if you have better points that you'd like to get answered?
Yes.
Invite that with them, so that way they can bring it back. But if we can at least allow them to know, should they pursue this, or if we should just 86 it? Go ahead, Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with most of the points Mr. Diastis made. As you may be aware, I've asked by the June Cowell meeting that we actually have a discussion about getting rid of empty properties and both the fire stations, so I'm hoping we're going to at least have a discussion about that property next month. I compliment Laurie and other people for coming up with another idea, but I am concerned about us, if we actually do decide as a group to sell that property, I think an easement could possibly be detrimental to someone coming to look at it. I don't know. I don't think any of us really know, but it just starts off kind of like behind the eight ball. I mean, a developer's not going to want to come in and fight with the city over a city easement. It just doesn't work real well. So, I guess what I would ask you to consider doing, I'm not saying you should do it, but maybe if we come back with a Plan B or Plan C of maybe other locations, I know that's probably an obnoxious statement to make, because I know it's not easy to find a place to do that, but I guess I would ask to do that. I guess the last point is, you know, I asked a long time ago about also considering moving this whole event to a Saturday as opposed to a Thursday night, and I expressed my reasons at the time, why I thought a Saturday event would be much more beneficial to more people in the city. I think many people in our town, the husband and the wife both work full-time, and I think it's really difficult for some families to get there at 6 o'clock at night on a weeknight. Just an opinion. But I guess I would like to pursue that also. I was told that was going to be a discussion item. I don't know where that's gone.
It was.
Thank you for listening.
So, I guess to recap, should we reiterate maybe what we should do for staff? So, staff has some direction, and one is we will make a straw vote to allow staff to continue pursuing this opportunity, but with a couple caveats, that you will maybe look for other areas throughout the city that are equally conducive or more conducive than this. And I think that about...
Yeah.
Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to add, or I would request a clarification between why the location would need to be close to a shopping district?
Was just parking, was my main, with the opportunity to use the sleigh to bring people back and forth. It's a close, large shopping, large parking area. That was the reason.
Okay. Because I was going to say, if it was for an opportunity for small businesses, maybe we could look into having, similar what they do to downtown Chicago, and have a small market with other vendors to help offset some of the costs as well, similar to our city markets in the summer, but a winter version.
That's a good idea. Anything else, Alderman Snorik?
Nope.
Okay. Alderman Diastis?
The only other thing I would like to add is, with the various choices or potential locations, just to fully understand the parking on it, because I know from other community events that I've run, I don't think people are going to necessarily want the entire town walking across their front lawn. Depending on where it is, the parking may just be the street. So, I know that limits locations. I just would like to know exactly how are we going to deal with, especially if it moves to a Saturday, let's say attendance, you know, goes up by 50%, you know? It's a lot of cars. So...
Okay. So, then to...
Just want the parking plan.
Clarify this, then we'll look for a straw poll this evening to have a yes to investigate further, find alternative locations within that investigation, and then request that you provide greater details once you come back with those two. Have a lot more information built out within those two components, given parking, et cetera.
And then, just to clarify, if I may, we will make sure we have a site plan for each location, showing parking opportunities and pedestrian traffic opportunities. We'll show costs related to putting that, whether it's a permanent plant or a temporary planting, and electrical fees. Any fees associated with it, we will identify all of those, so City Council has that for decision-making.
Wonderful. Did we get all that?
Yes.
Okay. So, with a quick show of hands, could I see who is in favor of allowing staff to go ahead and pursue investigating this, finding alternative locations, greater details with the subset of details within there? I think that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, last on the agenda here is the hotel and internet tax.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is one of those that Alderman Diastis will remember very well. Back in 2013, City of Rolling Meadows and numerous municipalities throughout the state of Illinois were in a class action suit to recover unremitted hotel tax revenue from online travel companies. The municipalities joined up with Sereno, Dirk, and Romero, and the main firm out of Georgia that had been successful in numerous states to actually win this for online travel companies. The state of Illinois did not join our suit at that point in time, and we did not prevail. If you look in their recent newspaper, Shonberg and one other municipality has now amended their hotel motel tax and are allowing online travel companies to pay their full tax for the price of selling a room. City Attorney Jim McCall did draft an ordinance following the Shonberg case, and actually, that's what's before you. We believe that it is correct to pass this at this point in time, as some of you know, I don't use this a lot, but we are keeping up with the Joneses, even though it's Shonberg and others. But it does capture online travel fees, obviously, that's associated with this. We do not know how much that would be to the City of Rolling Meadows. It's, I was going to be a little bit, but at the same point in time, we believe that it's time to do it, like others are looking at, too. We do know that some of the other municipalities that were part of that class action suit are also looking at doing the same thing now that Shonberg and the other municipality have passed this. With that, I do open it up for council members, and also, City Attorney Jim McCall is here, too.
Any questions or considerations, comments, Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. I'm in full support of this. The hotels charge full tax, whatever the tax is, to everybody right now, whether it's booked, online, by voice, however. The customers are already paying it. It's not going to increase anybody's charges. It's not going to do anything to anybody. It's not going to put us at a competitive disadvantage. It's, all it's going to do is the Expedia's and the Orbitz and those Travelocity's of the world will now have to pay the tax that they've been pocketing this whole time.
Yep.
So, it does nothing to hurt our people, our residents, our travelers, or anybody else. There's no extra charges. The hotels are already charging full tax.
So, this may be too technical for me, but the booking engines, once we apply this ordinance within our community, to start collecting the tax that they're currently possibly charging to their potential guests, right? How do we go ahead and ensure that that does make its way from the booking engine to the City of Rolling Meadows?
So, that would still be a state of Illinois, when they're actually filing out of their taxes, they actually would collect that, and then remit that back to us, is our understanding of how we do that. And, again, I do want to mention also that hotel motel tax, we do remit some of that quarterly to each of the hotels motels that we have in there, and we actually use hotel motel tax with food and beverage to actually fund part of our stuff to the Chamber of Commerce. So, any uptick that we have on this would actually help any of those groups, too.
Any further comments on this?
This might just be more of a question for Attorney McCall. Is, like, not that there's a bunch of residents doing an Airbnb, is this any online booking for a property? It is just Expedia, Orbitz, that? Because I know it said there was the 30-day limit, so if somebody is renting a motel room at Motel 6 for their residence, that would not necessarily be applicable, the way I was reading the statute, but it's just the online stuff regardless? Not an Airbnb that somebody rents out their house for a month?
Well, it could apply to the Airbnbs.
Okay.
They'd be a little bit more difficult to try to keep track of.
Okay. It's primarily, I mean, it's the physical brick-and-mortar hotels.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. That was just a point of clarification.
And if you stay in a hotel for 30 consecutive days, you pay no tax anyhow.
True.
So, it doesn't matter.
True.
Follow-ups? Anything additional?
This might be a question for city staff. Do we know what the state of Illinois, where they're trying to go at this point with taxing Airbnb and other home-sharing services?
The answer is that I've heard that they've been thinking about it, but nothing that I've seen done in the legislative updates, and obviously, I read through those enough, but they have not moved on that, and that's not one of those revenues that they are tailoring at this point in time. They're having more difficulty dealing with how to deal with the online sales tax distribution, and that's what they're really trying to focus on during this legislation for the next few weeks.
So, then, and this might be, again, another question for Attorney McCall, would this ordinance then apply to hotels that are utilizing Airbnb for business, or other sharing services? If they put a listing, that's who is responsible ultimately for the tax, but if it's as Alderman O'Brien was saying, would not apply to just a single-family home where someone's renting out a room for two days or something like that?
It could apply. My response to Alderman O'Brien's question had more to do with the practical aspects of actually collecting the tax.
I see.
Now, whether or not there's a liability for the tax, but how are you going to keep track of all that?
And I guess my question is, if we have a resident that approaches us, and they ask, okay, I'm going to have a room that's available on Airbnb seasonally, would this tax apply to them?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, if there are not any further comments or questions, then I guess I would like to ask with the straw poll, who's in favor of moving this ordinance to a first and second reading? All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. Well, with that, as much fun as this has been, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Can I, I got a second? Thank you. Meeting closed.